Comments should be submitted by email to the department if possible. The address is DEP dot Waterways at mass.gov. Please include Chapter 91, MHP Regulations in the subject line. If you do not have access to email, a hard copy may be mailed to my attention at massDEPWaterwaysProgram, One Winter Street, Fifth Floor, Boston, Massachusetts, 02108. At the end of the hearing, I will provide that address again and the email address. Are there any questions about procedural matters? If you have a question about this, if you could please raise your hand. Strictly unprocedural here for the hearing, if you don't mind. Okay. Any procedural questions, Stephanie? I can't see everyone's hands, so.
I do not see any raised hands.
Excellent, thank you. Again, I think you all just saw the disclaimer across the screen. This hearing is being recorded. Anyone who doesn't wish to be recorded can turn the camera on and microphone off. I see Andrea Pollinger had a question about a procedural question.
I was just going to suggest that you put the addresses you just read off in the chat.
Thank you. That's an excellent suggestion. Sure. You'll all enjoy this. Stephanie, could you take care of that for me? Thank you. Guess I could have asked Frank. Lastly, before we get started, in response to public requests, the department is scheduling two additional public hearings on these draft regulations. The hearings will be held in mid-July, on the same day as today's. As it's today's. No, I got that. The time, date, and method for attending these hearings will be published in the Massachusetts Register, newspapers of local circulation, and this information will be posted on the department's website. Anyone who has difficulty in identifying through those means or others, identifying the time, date, and method for these hearings, can contact the Waterways Program at DEP. Waterways at mass.gov, and we will get right back to you with that information. Okay? Again, Massachusetts Register, papers of local circulation, and the department's website. We will now begin the hearing. Excuse the repeat. Hello, my name is Daniel Padjen. I'm the Program Chief for the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Waterways Program. Here with me today is Stephanie Mora, Division Director of Wetlands, excuse me, Director of Division of Wetlands and Waterways, and Frank Taramina, Regional Planner, Waterways Program. Together, we constitute the hearing panel for today's remote public hearing. Copies of the draft regulations, summary, and other materials may be found on the department's website, or by emailing DEP dot Waterways at mass.gov. The format for today's hearing will be as follows. I will read the public notice into the record, which describes the purpose of the hearing and written comment procedures. Then I will make a brief presentation, and then open the floor for comments and public testimony. The department will be taking verbal testimony today, but strongly encourages individuals wishing to comment on these regulations to submit their comments in writing. Please hold all questions until after the presentation. When you're called on, please state your name and affiliation, if applicable, for the record. While we understand that the interest in public testimony here may be lengthy, we want to be certain that everyone wishing to has an opportunity to speak. You'll please excuse me if I cut off a comment partway through. It gets too lengthy. That individual will have an opportunity to resume their testimony later in the hearing. It's important to me that everyone gets a chance to speak. Once everyone has been given an opportunity to speak, we will circle back and allow others who have already spoken an opportunity to ask additional questions or comment further. Lastly, please submit your comments in writing. I will now read the public notice. This public hearing notice is available in alternative languages on DEP's website. Website given. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 91, Section 18, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection is proposing regulatory amendments to 310 CMR 9.00. These amendments would modify the provisions related to municipal harbor planning, effectively affirming Mass DEP's approval of each of the existing plans through incorporation into 310 CMR 9. The regulatory text and a background document are available with a copy of this public notice on DEP's website. Pursuant to Governor Charles Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, dated March 12, 2020, public hearings will be conducted online and via telephone. Mass DEP will hold, the notice says, two public hearings, virtual public hearings via Zoom, on this date and time. Tuesday, June 8, 1:00 p.m., Tuesday, June 8, 6:00 p.m. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email with the information needed to join the meeting. Please join the public hearing from your computer, tablet, or smartphone. You can also dial in using your phone. Testimony may be presented orally at the public hearing, or written comments may be submitted until 5:00 p.m. on June 22, 2021. Hold for an update to that date later. Written comments may be submitted by email to DEP dot Waterways at mass.gov, or via mail to Daniel Padjen, P-A-D-I-E-N, massDEP, One Winter Street, Boston, 02108. For special accommodations for these hearings, please call Mass DEP Diversity Office at This information is available in alternative format upon request. Mass DEP provides language, access interpreter, translation services to limited English proficient individuals free of charge. If you need an interpreter to participate in this or future hearings, translation services can be found at the following link given. By order of the Department of Environmental Protection, Martin Sueberg, Commissioner. All right. Share my screen. Everybody still with me? Somebody nod or wave or something? Realize I'm going to see that on video someday.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Bruce.
Daniel?
Yes, Stephanie.
Pardon me one second. I just want to recognize that Counselor Michelle Wu has joined us.
Excellent. Good afternoon, Counselor. It's good of you to come.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So, here we are. Again, thank you all for attending. I have a brief, excuse me, I have a brief presentation. Presentation will provide some context to today's discussion. Will also provide, at the end, a schedule, and will, again, apologize for the repetition, remind everyone how to submit written comments on this matter. Once again, Chapter 91 Regulation Amendments Regarding Municipal Harbor Planning for the Department of Environmental Protection Waterways Program. We moved the slide up at the last minute. Thank you for your patience. The process by which the department will be taking public testimony for the proposed regulations on May 14th. Public notice of draft regulations was published in the Boston Globe, in the Fall River Herald, in the Massachusetts Register, and on the department's website. Today is June 8th. We will be holding two hearings today. One at 1:00 p.m. this hearing, one at 6:00 p.m., and it'll be hearing number two. In response to public request, we have scheduled two additional hearings. As I tried to articulate earlier, those hearings will be held on the same day. Again, understood plans presently to be 1:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. The reason for that schedule is to be certain that by scheduling only afternoon or only evening hearings, we felt we might be excluding a certain segment of the population, and wanted to be certain that everyone who wished to participate had the opportunity to do so. The specific dates for the mid-July hearings have not yet been published. We are working with the Secretary of State's office to schedule that. The public comment period will end towards the end of July. I don't have a specific date, as that date will be determined based on the confirmed date of the hearing, those two hearings in July. I hope someone's keeping track of how many times I've listed this email address. That's where you submit written comments. So, going to provide a little background. The purpose of Chapter 91 is to protect inherent public trust rights in filled and flowed tidalands. We'll have a history lesson at some other date. That's what it comes down to, protects inherent public trust rights. In the vicinity of Boston Harbor, this means existing tidal waters up to the elevation of mean high water. Within filled tidalands, this means up to the landward mark, the historic high watermark. A Mass DEP issued license or permit is required for a wide swath of activities in those areas. May be summarized briefly as any change in use or structural alteration within those jurisdictional areas. The exception to this jurisdiction are, one of the exceptions, are landlocked tidalands. Landlocked tidal, work in landlocked tidalands or changes in use do not require a Chapter 91 Waterways License. They are reviewed through a separate process known as a public benefit determination in accordance with statute and statutes and regulations. Landlocked tidalands are those filled tidalands which are located 250 feet or more landward of the mean high watermark, and are separated from those waters by one or more interconnected Chapter 91 and the regulation, their regulations, 310 CMR 9, in addition to protecting public trust rights, and in fact, as part of that, creates limitations on development. Those limitations, I'm going to try not to read all of this, but it's hard to, they're so eloquent. These limitations do all of these things. Perhaps the items of interest, most interest here today are they create building height limitations, they create open space minimums, and they provide ground floor use limitations within Commonwealth tidalands. Okay? Inherent in all this is that they protect, I'm sorry for skipping around, they protect the rights to public access to tidalands, to fish, bow, and navigate, and other lawful Once you're in Chapter 91 jurisdiction, as I said earlier, any change in use or structural alteration requires a Mass DEP issued Chapter 91 license or permit, again, for a wide range of activities and uses in areas subject to Chapter 91 jurisdiction. This is a brief overview of the municipal harbor planning process, very brief. I acknowledge that some in this room have a very broad understanding, a very deep understanding of the municipal harbor planning process and various, and specific plans. However, you need to be certain that everyone who attends today has at least this correct grounding, correct framework for municipal harbor planning. Municipal harbor plans were created to include local considerations in Chapter 91, applying Chapter 91 to development. These harbor plans must be requested by a municipality. The department, neither DEP, CZM, nor Executive Office of Environmental Affairs initiates the preparation of an MHP. It must be by the municipality. Those plans are supervised while they're prepared, excuse me, while they're prepared by the municipality, that preparation is supervised by the Office of Coastal Zone Management and by the Department of Environmental Protection Waterways Program. A municipal harbor plan, once submitted for review, does not land on the secretary's desk until the Department of Environmental Protection Waterways Program concurs that the plan in question meets the regulations with regard to proper public purpose. Following that, under existing regulations, the Secretary for Environmental Affairs issues a decision on the harbor plan. The public process generally takes before one to two years. Friends at CZM said, please don't tell them one year. Takes between one and two to one to three years. Harbor plans by regulation have a five-year term. Longer terms may be obtained upon request, as are renewals and/or extensions. The draft Chapter 91 Regulations published on the department's website, in which I hope you have all seen, do the following things. Affirm the department's concurrence for existing municipal harbor plans. Confirms the department's authority to approve these plans. Achieves the proper public purpose stipulated in the regulation. It does this by, in part, by defining approved municipal. No one to blame but me for that. Defines approved municipal harbor plan, and in fact incorporates all of the numeric offsets, substitutions, and amplifications contained within those harbor plans. You're nearing the end of my slides. Any and all public comments are welcome. They need, we strongly prefer electronic submittal. The reasons for that are many. There's the address again. I think I should get it. So, yeah, somebody's keeping track. Please include a subject line, Chapter 91 MHP Regulations. That will really facilitate our collecting these comments. As you know, this address is used for other items. It's very important that we, that we keep all these organized, that we get them all in the same place. And again, hard copies may be submitted at the address below. So, I'm going to stop sharing my screen now.
Daniel?
Yes, Stephanie.
Pardon me again. I believe there's another counselor-at-large whose participation we want to acknowledge, a staff person, Jacob de Blakecourt. Pardon me for, if I mispronounced that. Would you like to acknowledge your presence and, hello?
Mora, hi. You got that perfectly, actually, and you're one of the few people to do that, so I appreciate it. Hi, I'm Jacob de Blakecourt. I am the public, the Director of Public Policy for Boston City Counselor-at-Large Julian Mihia. Very happy to be sitting in on this conversation. Thank you so much.
Thank you for attending. So, as I said, first, we'd like to take any state officials, excuse me, elected officials who may have been able to attend today. Are there any elected officials? Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. And should I set a timer for myself? Is it a minute, two minutes? I don't want to overstep.
We're going to be a little flexible on that.
Okay, I'll go fast.
Counselor, say your piece. Take your time.
Well, thank you so much, Chief Padjen, Director Mora, Mr. Taramina, for not only engaging today, but ensuring that there were additional sessions added to accommodate what is clearly a great deal of public interests and urgency around this. I'm here today to speak on behalf of, and alongside, so many community leaders, residents, and institutions who I am proud and privileged to represent across Boston. The moment of the ruling that came down recently opened up an opportunity for the city, the state, and all of our communities to really reevaluate. Our municipal harbor plans are supposed to be striking the balance of economic development needs while preserving the public interests and our long-term needs, in this case, the growing urgency of climate change, with proper community feedback and building consensus. We have not seen that with this particular instance. We have not seen that over many years of community members consistently being ignored in the process, and expert opinions, especially related to climate change, not being taken into account. And so, I am asking for this panel to not rush to a regulatory fix, to recognize that the court decision reflects substantial concern in alignment with ongoing, consistent, persistent community voices that have continued to push for a vision that reflects our long-term needs along with the urgency that we feel today to really ensure that this is a destination that is welcoming to all, that is sustainable and resilient, and moves Boston forward in the direction that we need to go in the future, not repeating situations from the past. And so, I won't, I won't go on too long. There are many others who are much, much more involved and informed, who I've learned a great deal from. I just wanted to appear in solidarity and in support with the residents and community members who have been at this for a very long time to say, there are five months until the next mayoral administration takes over at the city of Boston. Now is not the moment to rush through with a regulatory fix for something that is a very large and substantial challenge, one that deserves a full conversation, that takes into account all the pieces that we need to be planning for with the long-term interests across our city. Thank you very much.
Counselor, thank you very much for taking the time to attend and your comments. Stephanie, you'll excuse me for not having written down the name of the other public
Mr. de Blakecourt, would you like to make any comments on behalf of the Counselor-at-Large?
Thank you so much. No comments at this time, but just incredibly grateful for all the community members who have shown up and continued to make their voices heard, and that the voices of the community need to be front and center with this decision and all decisions moving forward.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public officials? Okay, just not.
Daniel, if you'd like, I can run through in order the names of the folks so far.
If you just, what was the, what was the first person to respond to my request to sign up for comments?
Yeah. So, I have a list, and just so people can gauge their timing, at least as of now, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people who have indicated in the chat that they would like to provide comments, and we will keep an eye on the chat, make that nine. And let me just tell you, the first three up is Tamara Small from NAAP, Peter Shelley from Conservation Law Foundation, and Vicky Spruill from the Aquarium. So, first is Tamara Small from...
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. For the record, my name is Tamara Small, and I am the CEO of NAAP Massachusetts, the Commercial Real Estate Development Association. NAAP represents the interest of companies involved with the development, ownership, management, and financing of commercial properties. NAAP has over 1,700 members who are involved with office, lab, industrial, mixed-use, multifamily, retail, and institutional space across the Commonwealth. NAAP strongly supports DEP's objective of confirming its approval of existing municipal harbor plans and affirming existing Chapter 91 licenses in the wake of the Armstrong decision. NAAP is grateful to the department for its recognition that the municipal harbor planning process has successfully combined local and state-level input to achieve significant public benefit through the tailoring of dimensional and new standards for particular locations throughout the Commonwealth. Communities that have created municipal harbor plans have engaged in lengthy, thorough processes involving substantial community and stakeholder input to determine what their waterfronts should look like. The harbor planning process is an important tool to allow communities to decide waterfronts that reflect existing and future development policies and priorities, and to obtain significant public benefits beyond those required by the baseline regulations. As Mass DEP recognizes, part of what makes the Commonwealth's waterfront special is its unique character, from the Cape and Islands to Boston to Gloucester, and each municipal harbor plan reflects this character in a way that the baseline waterway regulations could not achieve. Clarity and predictability are of paramount importance for the successful planning and adoption of municipal harbor plans. The proposed regulations serve to provide a critical affirmation of existing licenses in order to eliminate any uncertainty that the Armstrong decision may have generated. In order to ensure that this goal is achieved, NAAP will be submitting written testimony suggesting minor changes to the proposed regulations. These changes are drafted to both protect the entirety of existing harbor plans and create a path forward for municipalities who wish to implement future harbor plans in their communities. NAAP believes these technical changes are crucial to the successful implementation of these regulations. Finally, in the summary of the proposed changes to the regulations, DEP notes that it does not intend to make the draft regulations final until an appeal of the Superior Court decision is resolved. In our experience, even if the appeal were expedited, and no party sought any extension of time in assembling the record or drafting briefs, appeals can take years. As the department acknowledges in its summary, the Armstrong decision has created uncertainty both for holders of existing licenses issued pursuant to municipal harbor plans, and for those who are in the middle of permitting or planning projects within MHP areas. Delaying for a year or potentially more may harm prospective projects and the refinancing and conveyance of existing licensed projects. Accordingly, NAAP recommends that DEP consider adopting the proposed regulations as final once it has addressed comments. In the event that an appeal is successful, DEP may repeal the proposed regulations if necessary. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today. As mentioned earlier, NAAP will be submitting our written technical comments in advance of the deadline, and we look forward to remaining engaged in this process as it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. I think Peter Shelley is up.
Do you want me to just jump in? Good afternoon, Daniel and Stephanie. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Peter Shelley, Senior Counsel with Conservation Law Foundation. When CLF commented on the department's first comprehensive set of tidalands regulations in the late 1980s, we questioned the legal and policy basis for the MHP program, warning that it could just become a private developer's end-run around the standards and limitations in DEP's tidalands program, not a mechanism to improve that program. Our warning unfortunately has now borne fruit, and the Superior Court properly determined that DEP's MH program is not legal. The court's ruling, however, provides a critical opportunity, as Counselor Wu mentioned, to revisit the 30-year-old MHP program for several reasons. One, to get it right for the world we're all living in at present, not the one that was there in the 1990s. To take advantage of a critical opportunity to develop community, a community engagement procedure with transparent and inclusive public decision processes. And three, to ensure that MHPs promote greater or equal public benefit, a requirement that has more or less been lost in recent years. This is also an opportunity to redesign the MHP program in the face of climate change. Climate change was not even a thing, let alone a major coastal threat 30 years ago. The proposed regulations, however, seem only to have one purpose, to make the court decision go away. They are frankly a cynical response to the legitimate issues raised by the court. We have numerous problems with these proposed regulations, and I'll just summarize them briefly, if you'll allow me. First, they're not even really regulations, as they're not of general effect or future application. Second, it's not really clear what's going on with these regulations. The summary document says that they are, quote, "to ratify and confirm the department's MHP concurrences," and to, quote, "confirm the validity of all licenses," end quote, "issued under those MHP." The regulations... The regulations themselves talk about the department adopting earlier substitute regulatory provisions, but DEP, in fact, never made prior public purpose determinations. It's not clear what these regulations are. Are they intended to provide those proper public purpose determinations? Are they new license approvals? Are they something else? It's simply not clear what the department's trying to do with these. A third, the department's action appears in a number of cases deliberately obscured. Some of the proposed regulations use shorthand references to regulatory substitutes, amplifications, and offsets that are buried in other documents. Fourth, the regulations seem arbitrary on their face. Why are some regulatory offsets $3 million where others are $10 million where others have no offset payments at all? What is the uniform approach being proposed by DEP here? Fifth, many, if not all, of the MHPs identified in these proposed regulations, as you pointed out, Danielle, have terminal dates, after which they're to be reviewed again before renewal. Is DEP intending to reset those renewal dates through these regulations? And finally, the proposed regulations do not provide any process for future MHP situations. Ironically, such regulations would actually have been of general effect and future application, but they're not included. We're left with the question of why wouldn't the department take this opportunity to make these MHP rules fair and equitable for developers and the public alike? There is no immediate crisis now or in the near future. CLF urges the department to take its time and develop an MHP process with uniform and consistent regulatory requirements, a process that's fair to the public and development community alike, and embodies full and meaningful public and community engagement, and an MHP process that emphasizes public benefits over private profit. CLF will be submitting detailed written comments, and we thank you again for the opportunity to provide these verbal comments.
Thank you, Peter.
I think I'm up next. Thank you, Danielle, and thank you, Stephanie, for this opportunity to testify. I'm Vicky Spruill. I'm President and CEO at the New England Aquarium. And though many of you know us as a beloved tourist destination, the Aquarium is a conservation organization that's deeply concerned about climate change and its implications for both the world's oceans and our own home right here on Central Wharf. The Aquarium is also a designated water-dependent use and special public destination facility. We serve significant community needs. We attract a broad range of people to the waterfront, and we provide innovative amenities for public use. Our priorities for the downtown waterfront are accessibility, inclusivity, and climate resilience. This precious resource should be and must be a waterfront for all. We understand that Mass DEP has proposed these regulations to respond to the April Superior Court decision referenced previously that found parts of Boston's downtown waterfront municipal harbor plan and the process that created it invalid. While Mass DEP needs to address the court's decision and make changes to its MHP approval process, whatever fix is proposed should not affirmatively reinstate the downtown waterfront MHP. The decision offers us such a rare second chance to get it right. For Mass DEP to reinstate this MHP would be to abdicate its responsibility as a steward of the public trust. The downtown waterfront MHP has multiple fatal flaws, and I'll summarize them very briefly here. First, despite a robust process that included many public meetings, the final MHP failed to take community input and priorities seriously. This is a fact which was noted in the secretary's own approval of the MHP. Second, it deferred the bulk of the planning, including any significant engagement on resiliency, to later processes. And third, it served primarily to authorize to private developers pathways to permit large, out-of-scale projects with heights much greater than those allowed under baseline Chapter 91 regulations on the Harbor Garage and Hook Wharf sites. In fact, the substitute height provision for the Harbor Garage site was four times higher than the allowed 150 feet with limited required public benefits. This approach effectively declared that the waterfront was for sale. We are now seeing the results of this disaster, development proposals that would permanently harm the public's ability to access and engage with the waterfront by creating irreversible wind and shadow impacts on the adjacent public realm space along the water, negatively impact the neighborhood's ability to implement a district-wide climate solution by isolating and elevating the individual sites to the detriment of the abutting properties, and further solidify Boston's waterfront as an exclusive destination accessible only to people with financial means. We fundamentally agree with the Superior Court that there was a process in place that was open to misuse by a municipality under the right circumstances, which is what has happened with the downtown waterfront MHP. There is a reason that this downtown waterfront MHP generated the lawsuit that led to the Superior Courts' invalidation. It failed to safeguard the public's access to and enjoyment of the tidelands, which the Commonwealth is supposed to protect under Chapter 91, and the centuries-old public trust doctrine. Mass DEP has an independent obligation to review any MHP to ensure that it preserves the public's rights in tidelands, protects water-dependent activities, and promotes public access. We do not believe those standards were met in 2018 in a process that was subject to political pressures. And under any circumstances, we certainly believe the MHP deserves a reevaluation in 2021 in light of the pressing need to maintain equitable access to the waterfront, to protect water-dependent uses, and to incorporate the best thinking in climate resilience. So in conclusion, the fatal flaws in this MHP are so fundamental that Mass DEP cannot and should not affirmatively reinstate it as it proposes to do today. We are deeply concerned about the impact that doing so would have on the aquarium, on Central Wharf as a public gathering space, and on Boston's downtown waterfront more broadly. Boston deserves the protection for its waterfront, the Chapter 91 mandates. And as many of the candidates for mayor of Boston have noted publicly, we have an opportunity here to create a waterfront for all that aligns with our place as a visionary city that values resiliency, accessibility, and inclusivity. We too will be providing public comments, and I have one other suggestion, and that is that, that DEP immediately upgrade the Zoom subscription for tonight's hearing so that all members of the public can participate. Thank you so much for this opportunity to offer comments.
Thank you, Vicky.
Danielle, if I may, we are working on upgrading the Zoom to the 1,000 capacity for tonight's meeting and making sure that all of those that have already registered are aware of that and for the subsequent hearings. So our apologies for the limited capacity.
Yeah. Thank you for, hey, sounds like Stephanie was already on it, but thank you for that suggestion.
So the next three, some folks, I had put a note in the chat when you, when you, when you indicate in the chat that you'd like to offer comments, please provide your affiliation so that, so that we can announce that to folks. So the next three up are Westy, is it Edgemont or Eggmont? And I don't see a, an affiliation. I don't know if that's a private citizen. Thomas Nally, also no affiliation, and then Al Rain, private citizen. So that's Westy Edgemont, Thomas Nally, and Al Rain.
Hi, this is Norman Meisner. I'm a friend of Westy's. He had texted me. He got bumped off the Zoom and is unable to get back on.
Move to the next one.
Yep.
Excuse me, Norman, there does seem, apologize for this. There seems to be room for one more at the moment. If you could text this gentleman back, perhaps he can join. Again, we are working to upgrade the account.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, then that brings us to Thomas Nally.
Hi, this is Thomas Nally. Thank, thank you very much for setting this up and allowing me to comment. I'm representing a better city. A Better City supports the amendments to modify provisions of the 310 CMR 9000 related to the municipal harbor planning process that effectively affirms Mass DEP's approval of all the existing plans through incorporation into 310 CMR 9.0. The Chapter 91 process recognizes that each harbor in the Commonwealth is unique with conditions that require adaptation of the regulations through preparation and adoption of a municipal harbor plan produced by a sound planning process that takes into consideration municipal objectives and local conditions. You see the process work well over the years to address both tidelands concerns and other local interests in a variety of situations. We agree that in the interest of avoiding uncertainty and affirming the plans done today, it's important to maintain the validity of all adopted plans and licenses as an important objective. Mass DEP has engaged each MHP planning process and has issued a letter concurring with each plan and its substitute standards and amplification process. A Better City participated in the planning process held for the Boston Downtown Waterfront Municipal Harbor Plan that began in 2013 and was completed in 2018. The planning followed sound planning principles and resulted in the sound product. We found the five-year planning process to be thorough, comprehensive, and inclusive. There's a high level of public participation and discussion in the regular advisory committee meetings that were supported and guided by the City of Boston and the city's consultant team. The process was responsive to a wide range of concerns raised by a broad set of interests, and the outcome incorporated trade-offs and reasonable choices. We see no reason, as apparently some have proposed, to separate the approval of this plan from all of the other plans to be approved by these proposed regulations. There's much more review and work ahead, both before licenses granted for the projects designated under the downtown municipal harbor plan. And there need not be any stepping back from the current status of the approved plan. You'll have further comments and submit them in writing at the end of the comment period. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I think I'm next up. Good afternoon. My name is Al Rain. I'm a resident of Brookline, and I'm speaking as a private citizen. Some people in this meeting know that I was an advisor to the Harbor Garage project or earlier in the process, but I've had no affiliation with that project for at least three years. And in fact, except for my Aquarium membership, I have no affiliation that I'm aware of with any planning area institution or stakeholder. I applaud the department's response to the recent court decision, and I hope that you adopt these proposed regulatory amendments in their entirety. From 1983 to 1990, I was the Chair of the Governor's Development Cabinet, and in that capacity, I oversaw the development of the Chapter 91 regulations, working with two Secretaries of Environmental Affairs, two Commissioners of what was then DEQE, their staffs, our cabinet colleagues, the City of Boston, the environmental and harbor communities, the development community, and many other stakeholders. I can tell you that no decision was more important in that process than the inclusion of municipal harbor planning. There were many in the development community who argued against any zoning-like standards in the regulations, and while we in the state felt strongly that such standards should be included, it made sense to do so only if we could avoid the trap of a rigid one-size-fits-all framework that wouldn't have been right for any one harbor. The MHP process initiated and managed by the affected city or town renewed and approved by the state was the solution, and it's integral to how this entire regulatory code works. It's been there for 31 years, and it's produced results on which people, communities, and developers continue to rely. The validity of those outcomes should not be left in doubt. A word about the recent downtown waterfront MHP. I know that some argue that it's an outlier, that its very approval was an outlier that would justify simply undoing it. I've watched the MHP process from its earliest applications, and this one went through the same prescribed process as its 18 predecessors, albeit with more robust and extensive public discussion. It underwent the same review and approval, including the department's own thorough and thoughtful comments. It's been codified in city zoning. It's not a Chapter 91 license. It's not a building permit, but it is a planning framework, an approved planning framework reflecting years of work, and it should stand with the others. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next three that have signed up to offer comments are Norman Meisner, Laura Rude, and Ramesh Advani.
Hi, this is Norman Meisner. I'm speaking as a citizen of Boston, resident of Harbor Towers, and I'm one of the Ed Owl on Armstrong Ed Owl. And I'd like first to mention that Judge Davis, in his decision, gave a well-argued and well-articulated position about the illegality of the MHP process as it was executed. And, you know, I grant that it affected municipal harbor plans well beyond the downtown waterfront MHP. And I empathize with those who, you know, built legitimately on a name MHP that they thought was legal, you know, years ago. And I would suggest that existing buildings, and maybe even to the point of those that are currently having, excuse me, those that currently have achieved permits for building, that they should be grandmothered, grandfathered into the process at this point. But that does not suggest that developments that are coming up should be treated in the same way, because the decisions that were made, as Vicky Spruill at the Aquarium so well-articulated, a few years ago, are not as pertinent as they are today as the, as the environment has changed, as the need for accessibility has changed. So a proper and legal process, not the spot zoning, which this is the equivalent of that the department is proposing, should be used to ensure the full public participation with due consideration of accessibility and resiliency and environmental harm that buildings of that magnitude, such as are proposed in the downtown waterfront MHP, might do. And so I'm encouraging the department to exclude from this process that they're going through right now, any buildings that have not yet achieved permits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Laura, I missed Laura's last name.
Laura Rude, R-O-O-D.
Thank you.
Yes. Hi, my name is Laura Rude. I'm a resident, 85 East India Row, Harbor Towers. And I'd like to say that I agree with what Ms. Spruill had spoken about before, that, you know, there have been regulations that were put in for a reason, and it seems like that the harbor has been for sale. There has been many, many times I've spoken, as well as other people from Harbor Towers have spoken, we live here. This is our home. It's not a hotel. And we've And we've, I feel, have been unheard in this entire process. And finally, the judge actually looked at the process and found it was flawed, not for the reasons I said, but for other reasons. So I would like to put, I would like to agree with Michelle Wu to put a moratorium on things right now. There's going to be a new mayor. Look at what, and we're having, you know, each year, we're having more and more feedback around the climate crisis. We've seen Congress Street flood. We've seen Long War flood. And I think we need to come up with a comprehensive plan for the waterfront. We don't want to see, or at least I don't want to see, another group of buildings go up like we have in the seaport, which have been put up nilly-nilly, one box after another. And I'm not sure what they're going to do with the flooding over there. So I think, you know, until we have a comprehensive plan for everything, I think the building should be, there should be a moratorium, and there certainly needs to be height limits on what is at the waterfront. Harbor Towers is an aberration. It was built in 1970, and the MHP has been, you know, Chapter 91 was an answer to that. Nobody ever wanted to see it again. And yet, if I look, if I look over to the seaport, buildings are, I think, 15 stories. If I look over to the North End, we have all low rises there. So something needs to be congruent with the neighborhood and everything else. And thank you for taking the time to listen. Thank you.
Laura, thank you for your comments.
Daniel, let me just interrupt. The next one up was Ramesh Advani, but I wanted to just circle back to Westy Edgemont, or Egmont, who was able to rejoin us and had been earlier in the queue. So, Westy, if you are still here, you have the floor.
Hi. So first, you know, Daniel and your team, I'd like to thank you for doing your public service. I've had the privilege of serving public service, so thank you for allowing yourself to go through all the terminals of advocacy and advocates, as well as for the inevitable crunch that comes from legitimate differences of opinion and exaggerated differences of opinion. As a professor at Boston College, I had the privilege of being on the ground committee for the Greenway, and it was a tough fight. I was involved, and I was probably one of the louder advocates for keeping it undeveloped and open, I believe in open space. And I think the decision was great. We didn't put up a lot of buildings on that new available land. We created for the city some green space, some open space, some family space, some space welcoming of tourists, and aesthetically incredible space for the millions of people who pass through this area. And I would like to see it protected. I am deeply concerned that we have a lot of process that's gone ahead that has been in the interest of development, but not in the interest either residents or tourists or the aesthetic of the city, let alone its needs. I've been particularly aware that your department begins with the word protect. It's its mission. And I'm not sure what it means to protect right now in your minds, but I think the question of the court was, was well-founded in determining that the public interest was not being protected adequately by what had happened in the process. And I would, I would challenge the state officials, you guys, to really ask the question of what your primary mission is here. It's not to do a piecemeal approval. It's not to go back and revisit all 18 municipal harbor plans, but it is to make sure that where there is legitimate disagreement as to what should be done, that that is fought through length, in depth. And Daniel, with your background in science, I think particularly on the basis of facts rather than politics, I'm not much interested in having this decided by having, who's the mayor of the week, or the mayor of this interim, or whoever's going to get elected. I'd like it to be on some hard data. I haven't seen the data that the work has been done on a wind study, on the impact on the harbor, the impact on traffic. I mean, how can we get to this level of conversation without having looked at the facts that are necessary for urban development? It was my privilege to travel with Mayor Menino into many other cities. We had a small group that looked at development, and one of the great lessons was Vancouver was successful. Toronto was successful. They did a terrific job of setting back property development along their waterfronts for posterity. We looked at the catastrophe of Miami, and the catastrophe of Miami was a glass wall that brought property value down and hurt the city behind the glass wall of high rises on the waterfront. What we have to do right now is really do some hard work, a work that values the city, that values the fact that we have a cultural tour way that connects the resource of the aquarium, or the second most visited site, I think, in New England in terms of tourists, and the Children's Museum, the other resources that are developing in Fort Point and the seaport. We need to think about who's here, who needs to be here, and not who can make the most money off of this property. I have heard a conversation dominated by what was paid for the property. That is irrelevant if somebody overpaid. The question is, what should be here for the posterity of this city? And I leave it to you guys, the department. You have the power right now to be sure that we do what is right for the city, not because of Harbor Towers. I do happen to live downtown here and enjoy the waterfront, not because of Don Chafaro and his investment, but because there is, has to be some public agency that hears the competing interests and leans in favor of the long-term public interest of our city. And that, guys, that's you right now. Thank you.
Westy, thank you for your comments. I'm going to wear my BU hat to the next hearing. Stephanie, who's next?
All right. So we've had a few more folks sign on. So there are, currently, there are one, two, three, five folks left who have signed up, and I'll still keep an eye on the chat. And the next three are Ramesh Advani, Rita Advani, and Todd Lee, all commenting as private citizens.
Thank you. Ramesh. Ramesh, yeah.
Thank you, Daniel and Maura. Appreciate you allowing me to speak. I am commenting as a private resident and a voter in the City of Boston. However, just in terms of some credibility for those of you who don't know me, I am a former two-term elected selectman from another town in the Commonwealth and participated in many, you know, controversial discussions between the planning board, the Conservation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, whenever there were questions of development that crossed many significant issues. And I'm happy to say that while the process was followed, what was very useful was to see the outcome of the process of those cross-commission discussions to really result in changes as a result of the public comment and public participation. And keeping that in my mind, I have been quite disturbed because I have participated in many, many meetings that have been held over time of the MHP process. So having said that, I will read out these comments, but please treat this as my written record on the MHP as submitted specifically for the spot zoning changes related to Boston Harbor Garage. While the process of hearings for the MHP, the public hearings, was followed in form, it did not result or reflect any changes brought to the BPD's attention to factor in concerns related to Chapter 91. One in particular I would like to bring to the Waterways Group's attention within DEP is the impact of this tall, non-waterway development, not just on fowl and fish, and my goodness, don't we, people in the first world, spend a lot of time on fowl and fish. But it does not factor in the impact on humans, who in particular are part of the public and are part of the minority ethnic groups who will be limited and excluded from this area as a result of this economically limiting development of what would be available to affluent white population. The impact of diversity, equity, and inclusion that Vicky spoke about so eloquently, they have not been taken into account. The DEP must instruct and direct the MHP writers and the City of Boston to fix this issue and must reflect this formally, both to our legislature and to the executive branch in the state. And thank you for giving me this chance to voice this.
Thank you.
So next up is Rita Advani.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity, and good afternoon, everyone. Much has been spoken, and this process has been going on for a very long time. I have been a part of the municipal harbor planning process. I've been attending pretty much every meeting since I, for the past, I would say, seven or eight years. So my affiliation is that I live in the neighborhood. I live at Harbor Towers. But definitely, you know, I'm very interested in the waterfront and as it impacts everyone. So I want to talk a little bit about the protections that were in the, for the tidlans that were debated and determined by the legislature and enshrined in Chapter 91. I believe that MASTEP would exceed its authority in completely modifying these regulations by accepting municipal harbor plans that grossly violate these regulations, like the one proposed for the downtown waterfront MHP. The intent of the regulations was to allow modifications that were somewhat reasonable, not gross violations. And everything that we read in the downtown waterfront MHP is a gross violation, and Vicky has outlined some of those details there. So I asked the DEP to ensure that the municipal harbor plans conform to the intent and the requirements of Chapter 91, both in spirit and the letter of the law. You cannot rewrite the law at a department level. This has to be debated at this legislature, and that's where the ultimate protection for every citizen resides. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rita.
Okay. The next three commenters are Todd Lee, Matt Rubens, and Bruce Berman of Save the Harbor, Save the Bay, pardon me, Matt Rubens of Harbor Towers, and Bruce Berman of Save the Harbor, Save the Bay. Todd Lee is a private citizen. So Todd Lee, you're up next.
Daniel, Maura, thank you for this opportunity. The commentary has been so erudite and thorough and well-thought-through that I'm afraid my reactions are, even though I was a former chairman of the AI of the Boston Society of Architects Urban Design Committee and have some other credentials like that, it's really just as an urbanist that my reaction to this travesty of the changes being proposed, perhaps discredit my ability to be entirely rational and as erudite as what we've heard. I mean, Michelle Wu has been terrific. The CLF observations are so spot-on, and the aquarium commentary seems so irrefutable to me that I only ask that we, or that you have the ability to look at the spirit of, of public interest versus private gain that we're all talking about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. Despite the fact that you, when I got to that, got from that was that others had said some of the things you might have said, I encourage you to submit your comments in writing if you so wish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Rubens, Harbor Towers.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Daniel, for your work and leadership on this issue. I rise today to talk on behalf of Harbor Towers. I chair the Garage Committee. I'm also a trustee and a 10-year, 11-year resident, I think, of Tower 2. I don't want to, I'm going to try to be incremental. A lot has been said. We will also be filing our own comments. I am, as Norman said, one of the et al of the Armstrong decision. I want to react to a couple of comments that have been made and try to sort of set the record straight on some public spin, I guess, that has been made about the process that led us to this point. And that is specifically the process behind the Municipal Harbor Planning Advisory Committee and the council that led to the downtown waterfront plan that was promulgated in 2018. We keep hearing about these 40 public meetings. I participated in many of them. My wife, Meredith Rosenberg, actually served on that committee, along with Bruce and others. I know Bruce is going to follow me and refute what I say, but whatever, that's okay. Used to that. That process was not a transparent process. I know Rich McGuinness is on the call, and I fully, I have enormous respect for the work that he does and the others in BPDA. But every single meeting, we heard about specific issues related to two developments, initially three developments, Rose Warf dropped, or Long Warf, excuse me, dropped out, and we spent all of our time talking about wind and shadow and other things related to two projects. That was not an inclusive project that talked about a district-wide solution. In fact, at one point, letters were written effectively calling out that commission as a sham and asking it to effectively be restarted or have power. There was no formal report adopted by that commission. In fact, the final meeting, I believe, was late 2016, early 2017, and then we had an 18-month blackout period while the state and other entities, we believe, worked out on their own privately outside the public view the substitutions that wound up in the MHP. So let's be honest with ourselves. This was not a transparent public process. The judge, Judge Davis, who I have obviously a lot of respect for, but in his commentary in both his public comments from the bench and as well as within his briefs, talk about the process and the issues that he found in this case, and that is reflected in his comments. I believe, I agree with the comments that Norman made before. The reason we are here is because of that, of his objection, if you will, to that process and that decision. He particularly focused on the phrase relatively modest in size. That's part of Chapter 91. And his conclusion was that the proposed offsets related to specifically the Pinnacle Proposal, but also others within this zone were not relatively modest in size. I'm not here, again, to shoot at anyone or anyone's project. You know, we are not living in a world where we can simply wave a magic wand and say we ignore the rights of commercial developers, but we do live in a city where everyone's rights need to be respected and the process needs to be respected. And I'm also not one to complain about something and not propose a solution. We have gone on record saying we believe that a open, short, public process that is a comprehensive Boston waterfront-wide process will lead to an outcome that everyone can buy into. I'm pleased that Mayor Janey, as well as other public officials, have bought into that as well, as Vicky has mentioned that as well, Vicky Spruill here as well. So we are supportive of a relook at this process with a true, open, public engagement that reflects the fact that things have changed, not only since 2013, 2016, 2018, when we nearly lost our building due to the floods of January and March. Climate has changed. Public access has changed. The needs of a city recovering from a pandemic have changed. Housing needs have changed. A lot has changed since this project was approved by the MHP, and we just simply ask for an opportunity to relook at that project in light of the current facts on the ground.
Well said.
Thank you, Matt.
That brings us to Bruce Berman, Save the Harbor, Save the Bay.
Thank you, Chief Agent, and also for your help with this. I just want to make a few comments. Save the Harbor, they will of course be offering written comments at the end of July after we've had a chance, if we can get into the room, to hear everyone else's comments. It's so good to see so many of the folks that I spent four years of my life every Wednesday afternoon with at the Municipal Harbor Plan Advisory Committee meetings. I was privileged to serve on Boston's Municipal Harbor Plan Advisory Committee for the downtown waterfront, for the Fort Point Channel, for the seaport, and for East Boston. And also, I'm And also was one of the authors of the award-winning Fort Point Channel Watersheet Activation Plan, which seems to feel fairly relevant to this day. Matt, I'm not going to disagree with you, except for in one area. If you can show me, after hearing from Chief Pageant, that his staff says that it didn't take two years to conduct the plan for downtown, what you mean by a speedy process that we can all agree with. But I want to make three quick points today. The first, unless I'm wrong, the next mayor, or this mayor, could today request a new harbor plan for the entire city. What can't happen is that DEP or the governor imposed one on us. But we have the right to request one. So if there is, and I suspect there is, a desire for updating a plan to reflect a world that where our definition of diversity, equity, and inclusion has broadened, I support it. And I don't think that anything that we're talking about here would preclude that. But what I don't want is I don't want what the legislature didn't want to begin with, which was to have DEP impose a plan on a city. In my opinion, mayors have a better understanding of what the needs are of their cities. Elected officials have a better understanding of those needs than, pardon me, folks, bureaucrats that are on a state level. And the further away you get from the city, the more true that is. So there's one other thing I do just want to point out. This has been an iterative process and the city has done a remarkable job in becoming a thought leader in a response, adaptive and resilient response to climate change. That said, you know, when you look at the Seaport and you look carefully, you see that it's the legacy buildings and the city's infrastructure that flooded. Not Van Pier, not the new buildings. What's at risk from climate change is incredibly serious. And we need to address it. It's a huge issue. Maybe the, one of the, after maybe racial justice, one of the pressing issues facing this nation. But, but under the circumstances, out of respect to the city of Boston and its planning process, which I would argue was extensive and inclusive despite the fact that so many of the abutters to one property are here today in opposition to that property. But I don't think you should throw the baby out with the bath. There are other opportunities to oppose individual projects that you don't like. And there's plenty of legal talent in the room that I'm certain has already begun to plan how to do that. In the interim, I'd strongly urge DEP to adopt the proposed regs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
If I'm not mistaken, a read of the chat shows that that is everybody who has asked to deliver comments. If I've missed anybody, please make yourselves known. See, hands raised. See anything? Chat. So Daniel, I believe we've now concluded the list of folks who had indicated that they wanted to provide verbal commentary testimony today.
I'm looking here to see if we have anyone who has called in. And I, I see two individuals who called in. And I'm not certain they are able to raise their hand or chat. So let's see if we can ask that person. So of the two, of the two folks who called in, last four digits are 3712 is one of the. Not knowing who you are, would you like to, the opportunity to give verbal testimony? Again, the number 3712. No, I guess not. And then there was one other individual, a 908 number. And the last four digits were 1203. Would that individual like to offer any verbal testimony? Okay, I guess that's it.
Hello. Hi, I just sent a note there. I'm not sure if it's the right time. I'd like to say a couple of words.
Thank you very much for speaking up. I appreciate it. You have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Viviana Arosteguiham. I have a unit at Harvard Towers, Tower Two. I, I don't have the history that all of you have from participating on the different changes that happen in the city. But I did some research before I purchased my unit. And one of the issues that is the most alarming is the fact that we need to raise the sidewalk at least four feet and a half. I am, I quote unquote, consider a minority. I'm a Latina. I was born in Bolivia. I'm a software engineer. And I think my point to all of you is to try to think on the people who will be here on 2035. They will be the people who will be living in these buildings. I work with children that are from poor neighborhoods. And poverty is something transitional. It's not something that is based forever in their lives. So a lot of them, they want to live in tall, big buildings with glass and metal. Because that's what they see. And that's, if you look at the furniture that is on sale, it's, you know, all clear plastic. But my point is, we have to, I hear both sides of the, both sides of the argument. But I think everybody should have to back up a little and then consider who's going to be living here in 2035, in 2045. And based on that, decide if we can allow other commercial developers build and under what conditions. For me, the priority is to raise the sidewalk at least to five or seven feet. And not just, not just in front of Harvard Towers. But it has to be across the whole hardwood walk and the whole shore. So I think we need to work together with the developers if they can help and if they can finance. I don't have the solution. I don't have the answer, but I think we need to work together. And we don't have to, you know, stick too much to the views or to the fact that that is not accessible, is not inclusive. It's not true. It is accessible. It is inclusive. But we have to provide maybe for children to come and have a computer lab facing the ocean, something that they can inspire them. You know, help them with their, with their laptops or things like that. But I think more than anything else, we need to be open to all the resources that can finance this raising of the shore. Thank you. That's great.
Thank you very much. Is there, is there anyone else? Maybe you could raise your hand if you'd like to speak now since we've worked down our list. Is there anyone else who would like to give verbal testimony at this time? Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna flip through the chat now to see if there are, if we might easily answer any of the logistical questions that are in the chat. You will, you will note that the department is, has not been answering questions, although none have been asked of us. We will, we will. Three people taking notes and we're recording this session. And we look forward to receiving the written comments. That is by far the best way to ensure that folks' comments are heard. Multiple, three, there's three different ways to do that. So I will, at this moment, flip through the chat to see if I can answer any of these logistical questions. The technical questions, we will likely not be answering today, but we'll certainly take them all in advisement. This, I suspect this is, there's more conversation to go, but this has been a very, it's been a good session. It's been, I appreciate the comments. Do the comments become public as well? Comments that are submitted in writing are certainly public documents. The department will endeavor to make those available. We actually, a week ago, started cataloging and make, to make them available on our website. So we, the answer is yes. The public comments that are submitted will be posted on the department's website. If you don't have that link in front of me, if you go to the link that is provided in the public notice that you all received that got you here, that very same website will also include copies of the public comments. Okay. The recordings. And apparently, the recording will as well. Thank you, Stephanie. She's a little ahead of me, as usual. Just trying to navigate this here. I'm just going to go to the top because people keep adding comments. Let's see. Just pardon me while I do this. We see anymore that should be.
Agreed.
Sorry. Oh, here we go. Thank you. I've got the better mouse here. DEP will increase the capacity. We're still working on that. I saw an email come through earlier. We're working on that. I'm just flipping through. Pardon the silence.
I believe those were the main questions, just several comments about please trying to up the capacity so we can accommodate everybody that wants to participate. So we're working on that. And yes, the recordings will be posted to the website.
Yep, that does seem to be. It does seem to be, it will be helpful to have corrections if these are stated. Deanna Moran from Constellation Law Foundation asks, identifies that the, one of my slides indicates that the municipal harbor plans require five-year terms. She's correct in that regard. They are, I will clarify that for this evening. They are, I believe they are typically five-year plans. However, I believe Deanna is correct. The secretary may set an expiration date. So we'll make that correction. Thank you, Deanna. Deanna's second comment regarding the jurisdictional limit of filled tidelands. Deanna writes, your slide stated the jurisdictional filled tidelands only go as far as the historic high watermark. We believe the court has interpreted the jurisdiction as the current or former historic high watermark. Current high watermark or the former historic, whichever is more expansive. Not particularly clear on what that question asks, but it was not my intention to, it's never my intention, to reduce the geographical jurisdiction of Chapter 91. As Deanna points out, the landward limit of Chapter 91 is either the historic high watermark or 250 feet landward of the shoreline and is landward of a public way. So those are landlocked tidelands. So again, it is not my intention to, as someone on the call may note, not my intention to reduce the jurisdictional area of Chapter 91. So let's see if we can't clarify that, that slide as well. And thank you for, Deanna, for watching my back, I think. Anyway, thank you for the correction. I really appreciate it. So one moment while I pull back the end of my script. Apologize for that. Okay. Oh, there's not much left, turns out. Thank you all, I mean this, thank you all for attending today. This is an important matter to a lot of folks. No point in listing those folks out. This is an important matter, period. We're grateful for, the department is grateful for your participation. We'll be very grateful to receive your comments in writing. Please, as Ramesh, I think, or someone else asked, in the event a written public comment is not submitted, we will, we will refer back to the tape, as it were, for that comment, for his comment. And if others, that happens to be the case. So I'm going to conclude the public hearing now. Last call. Is there anyone else who would like to offer any verbal testimony at this time? Please raise your hand if so. Okay. Again, thank you all. There will be another public hearing later today. The hearing will begin at 6 o'clock. The Zoom code, again, you need to sign up for that hearing, as you did for this one. Excuse me. We will endeavor to expand the capacity for that hearing. I suspect that will be a matter of having two Zoom windows open so that we can be certain that people are referred to the correct, to the second one. We'll work that out. Please submit your written comments to depwaterways@mast.gov. That is the most efficient way to contact the Waterways Program. Lots of folks monitor it. In this case, lots of folks are monitoring it. Please indicate in the subject line, Chapter 91 Regulations, MHP. So we capture that, put it in the right list. Okay. Stephanie, would you like to add anything?
No. Thank you very much, everybody, for attending. And again, sorry for the technical snafu.
Stephanie, let's just get this on the record. Stephanie, could you please save the chat? I don't have that capacity as, not as the main host. I want to be certain we capture that.
Done.
Okay. Again, thank you all very much. I'm sure we'll see some of you at 6 o'clock. Please stay tuned for information on, oh, Sarah McCammon did ask, I'm sorry, sorry, Sarah. Sarah also asked a question about information regarding the mid-July hearing. The department will publish, as I said, will publish that notice in the Massachusetts Register. Two papers of local circulation, I suspect they will be the Boston Globe and the Fall River Herald again. We will put that information on our website. We will also put that information in the email footer for the Waterways email address. So we're going to, we're going to do everything we can to be certain that, well, we do lots of things, excuse me. I'm sure someone from my office, General Counsel, is on board. We will do, we will do lots of things to be certain that word gets out of when that hearing is. At a minimum, it will meet all of those regulatory standards. Okay. Think we're going to conclude the hearing now. Have a good day, everyone. Thank you again. I'm sure I'll see some of you at 6.